Yes, Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Ms. Pritchard.
Here.
Ms. Parkers.
Here.
Thank you.
We are fortunate that Kids First partnered with us in this initiative to give us feedback. And we've got a survey that they're going to share with us. But our chairperson, focus first, did that to me either, is he looking most of the close with you. So I'm going to ask that we could, if we could, all of the information that they gathered, really point to what you, if you have five or six.
Okay. Okay. survey, which is actually very good statistically, based on the amount of time that the survey was available to the community. A little bit of the demographic information. Who was asked to participate in this survey? It was parents, guardians of current Medina City Schools students, Medina City Schools staff, students and alumni, community members, community members with former Medina City Schools students, and community business members. Age groups that were asked to participate were 18 to 65 and above. So you can see that the primary demographic age-wise was that 35 to 44 age group. So Kids First asked a number of questions with regard to the different aspects of the plan that we're looking at. The first question was, how willing are you to support a bond transitioning to a 5, 6, and 7, 8 building model? 23.3%, 24% said they were not supportive. About 70% said that they were supportive, and not quite 7% said they were supportive, but not at this time. Then they asked if they were not supportive, what were some of the reasons why they weren't willing to support this piece of the pie? And a lot of it had to do surrounding busing and transportation concerns, increased taxes, financial stress due to increased property values, which recently were increased here, and inflation. Cost, and what is our purpose? Losing neighborhood schools. We need to consider using buildings that we currently have, so making renovations to them. Disruptive to students and families, and too many transitions for students. The next question on the survey was, how willing are you to support a bond for the construction of a new preschool? And about 24% said that they were not supportive. 61% said that they were supportive, and about 15% that they were supportive, but not at this time. Again, the question was asked if you weren't supportive of the construction of a new preschool. If you could please provide some examples. Again, increase in property tax, not a good understanding of the need for a preschool in public schools, should be able to use a current building, costs, and there are more pressing needs, and too many new facilities all at once. Next was a question surrounding the construction of a new elementary school. 26% said they were not supportive. About 59% said that they were supportive, and about 13% said that they were supportive, but not at this time. And again, just some commentary about reasons why people were not supportive. Common theme of increased taxes. Plenty of schools, we need to consider using what we have. Cost, unnecessary funding should go to build a new middle school. Next question was about Ken Duke Stadium, visitors' bleachers, replacing them and making a full renovation to include a weight room, locker room, and concession stand. About 27% said that they were not supportive. 56% said that they were supportive, and about 16% said they were supportive, but not at this time. And one note I want to make on this particular question is that in the survey results, the primary response was for replacement of the visitor's side bleachers only, and not looking to do all the other items that were discussed in this question. Again, if people were not supportive, reasons why, increased taxes, cost, not necessary, supports, replacing bleachers only, as I previously mentioned, use other resources to cover the cost. Academic and school facilities should be the priority. Next would be about support of a new turf stadium to replace Memorial Stadium, which would be required to move if a 7, 8 building was built across the street from the current Claggett. In this question, we are talking about using the site by the recreation center. About 31% said that they were not supportive. About 51% said that they were supportive, and about 18% said that they were supportive, but not at this time. Again, some of the reasons, cost, use what is available, seek other funding resources, not the best use of funds. Academic facilities should come before athletics. Concern from adjoining neighborhood, and too many asks all at once, so too many projects. Similar question about New Turf Stadium to replace Memorial Stadium, except utilizing the existing space on the AI Root property. 45% said they were not supportive. 38% said that they were supportive, and about 16% said that they were supportive, but not at this time. Again, cost, not good use of tax dollars, too far away from Medina High School, traffic, need to focus on academic buildings and transportation issues. The next question is in regard to preserving and renovating Garfield into the Board of Education office. About 24% said they were not supportive. 60% said that they were supportive, and 16% said that they were supportive, but not at this time. Common theme here, increased taxes, not necessary, feel the building is too big for this purpose. It should be used as a school. Cost, focus on students. It should be repurposed, not an immediate need, and the board office is fine at its The next question was with regard to the current Board of Education office and how we plan to utilize it. Should we be fortunate enough to renovate and move to Garfield? So district use would include expanded student district or community use. About 26% said that they were not supportive. 53% said they were supportive, and about 21% said that they were supportive, but not at this time. The reasons people were not supportive was increased taxes, cost, not a good use of funds, and not necessary. So just to kind of put this all in perspective and provide a summary. In rank order, about 70% were in favor of renovating Roots for a 5, 6 building and rebuilding Claggett as a 7, 8 building. Next in line was the construction of a new preschool, at about 61%. Garfield preserved as the Board of Education office would be about 60%. Construction of a new elementary school would be about 59%. Replacement of Ken Duke Stadium visitor's side bleachers to include a weight room, locker room, and concessions was 56%. But again, remember, the primary focus on those that did respond was the replacement of visitor bleachers only. The repurpose of current Board of Education office is about 52%. New turf stadium to replace Memorial Stadium, using the rec center space, is about 51%. And a new turf field to replace Memorial, utilizing space at Roots, was 38%. So that summarizes the survey that Kids First had put out. So I'd like to open it up to any questions that you might have.
Can they be pointed in? Test?
Yeah.
I like it. So any questions about our ser- any questions about the survey?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The asterisk regarding-
Oh, thank you, sorry. The asterisks regarding the bleachers at the stadium. Is there any way to break that down, or can you further explain that? So it sounds like most of the support was for the bleachers, but do you have percentages for- was there any support for all of that, or?
We don't have that data broken up to a certain percentage, was only for one versus the whole. But the overwhelming feedback we got was that people were supportive of that project, were supportive of a targeted project versus a large inclusive project. And I don't know if this was shared, but I'm always, just being somebody who works with numbers and analysis, I think it's important to know where we provided the survey. And so we did do a public records request and sent an email to emails that were registered and able to be provided to parents or guardians of MCS staff, and staff, sorry, but MCS students. As well as we had it on our website, we posted everywhere, you know, via social media that we had access, and then did promoted posts. So sometimes I think that's helpful to know, you know, where it was provided out to, to see some of that data.
Do you know, or Mrs. Busby, do you know what is the population of our district-wide area? That I know with the response for 635, I'm wondering is that out of 27,000?
I know that.
18 are over, do you?
Yes, because I looked it up. We have under 20,000 people. So roughly 3% of our population took the survey.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. And then as a follow-up to that, and maybe we don't have the data for this, but I was just curious, how did the results work out with the demographics? Was it more parents that were supportive, community members, just like that? Because I would think that would help with the message that we need to get out as well.
Yeah, so when we look at the people who are most likely to respond, our highest respondents was parents or guardians. And then our next highest respondents was staff. But you can see that the demographics show that the highest being parents, that parents were really driving our overall numbers and results, is enough high enough to see that that's who was, you know, whether they were agreeing with it or not agreeing with it. I think it's also important to note in our survey that you could self-identify, and so I think there's always the potential that some staff are also parents, or you'll see that we've got community business members and other various categories. And certainly, there may be people that have fallen in more than one, but because it was self-identification, and we had no way to know, are you really a parent? Are you, you know, whatever that might be. But it was really driven, the results, by parents or guardians of current MCS students.
Yeah, I have one question. Was the comment section open to supportive in everybody, or was it just not supportive?
They were able to add comments as they felt appropriate to add comments.
So I had a question about the 65-plus folks.
Yeah.
So how did you reach them? Since it was all online, right?
It was.
No paper copies available anywhere?
We did attempt to reach out and coordinate to have paper copies provided in some community areas, that we felt it's important to reach those individuals who might not access social media.
Right.
And we were challenged to be able to enter some of those places.
So it's such a low turnout. What do you, you think that's why?
Yeah.
You just don't know?
Oh, yeah. No, I do think that's why. What I found to be interesting is some of the remarks within that population, you can tell are really thought-out remarks, that, like, the ones that we did reach. It wasn't just a simple checking of a button or a toggle. We did tend to get some really thought-out comments from some of that population.
I think it's important to note, too, that just based off of previous surveys that we've done as a district, the amount of responses that we received, or that Kids First received is very similar to the amount of responses that we would typically receive from a district survey. So considering it was from an outside school organization, I felt like they had a decent response. Obviously, we'd prefer to get 20,000 people responding, but getting individuals to fill out the surveys is always a challenge.
Yeah, it really is. We did make a change to initially, when the survey-
Do I have to push the button? Am I, like, just, okay? So initially, when we did produce the survey, we did initially have the requirement that you provide a name and an email, and then after we got community feedback, that there were people that would like to remain anonymous, we did make the change that people could answer the survey and not have to provide that information.
Go ahead, Amy.
So I just want to add to Aaron's comment about the number of people who responded. And really, if you take a look at this survey versus surveys that the district has put out, this is a very short period of time, and historically, we may be, in a two-week, three-week period of time, doubled those, that number in district surveys. So I think that the perspective that Mr. Sable provided was pretty accurate, and that this is a good representation of what we normally get.
Yeah, I think having the name and email hurt initially when people got it, because I think, Becky, you got some calls, I got some calls, and they were furious, and then, you know, we talked to Amy about taking it off. And then afterwards, I, you know, called them back and said, you know, you can do it now.
Right.
And, you know, sometimes it's just that short window was just really hard. But I do want to thank you for doing this. I mean, I know it's not easy, and we really appreciate all that you've done.
Well, we appreciate all that you guys do, all the time, so.
Is the demographics that we got here similar to the demographics that we get in school sense surveys?
Yeah, we tried to model, you know, worked with Kids First to model this survey up against surveys that we've done as a district.
Okay, cool. And then my final question that I have, at least right now, is for the Ken Duke's question, how reliable can we lean on the supportive versus non-supportive, if maybe some people voted non-supportive just because of that? Where some people might have said, yeah, I'm supportive if it's just bleachers?
I don't know if I entirely understand the question.
So there might have been some people that said, hey, I'm supportive of changing the athletic facility, if only there were, if we only focused on the bleachers? And then we might have also had some people that said, I'm not supportive at all, because they only wanted the bleachers. Do you know, did you see a lot of that, or was it like just one specific thing with that comment?
I think, speaking even beyond the survey, because Kids First, we also led the community roundtables. And I would say, in particular, the engagement we tend to have the highest of tends to be, like, elementary, even middle school. I think that initially was, you know, the concerns around heritage. Certainly, many families got really involved. And so I think what we see in here is probably a lot of those parents that have been pretty involved in the beginning. And, you know, I'm a parent of an 11-year-old, a nine-year-old, a soon-to-be seven-year-old. And so that is one area where, you know, Ken Duke Stadium really isn't in our realm of stuff yet that we're dealing with. Our kids aren't old enough to really access that outside of going and viewing as a visitor. So that's definitely those parents responding, saying, these are the things that are really important to us right now. But we did hear back from community members that it's not that athletics aren't important, and that those things aren't important. I think, as Amy very nicely went through the slides, you see, you know, increased taxes and cost was a concern on each and every slide. And so I don't think it's that people are saying, you know, no completely, we want to do what we have to do, but it's tough, is what we've heard from many community members. Right now, financially, things are tough for many of our community members.
Hi, I have a question on the preschool one. I know everybody's worried about taxes and whatnot, and that, you're right, it was the first one across the board, and I understand, living in Medina, too. But the second point was not a good understanding of the need for preschool in public schools. Did you get any kind of feedback as to why people didn't understand that? Because that's something I think we can do to educate.
Yeah, I would say people, we have heard, don't understand the changes that have come across, that have meant that, you know, Medina needs to create a larger space for preschool, what that looks like. And so we have, I personally, I happen to professionally work within the disability community quite a bit. And so we, I have heard back that people don't entirely understand, for example, like, why heritage in its current state would present many, many challenges to operate that you'd have to overcome, and that it is not an option that Medina, you know, gets to choose to comply with.
I know that's a state, and I don't know if it's a federal law, but I know it's at least a state law, that that's required in a couple of years. So it's not an option, you got to do something.
Right, right. And I know when I spent some time speaking with some individuals that are very familiar with Heritage School, you know, obviously, I'm a wheelchair user, you know, just talking about a wheelchair user navigating some of those spaces is really challenging, and, you know, preschool and the requirements to make sure that we can serve all students and students with disabilities effectively in those spaces would be challenged and challenging in Heritage.
Or probably require a lot of modifications to the building, which gets really expensive.
Yeah, I think when I tried, like, for example, I was, you know, we got a tour, and I tried to go into, the students were not in the building, I tried to go into the restroom, and there's no way, as a wheelchair user, I would have been able to access the student restroom. Now granted, I'm in an adult-sized wheelchair, it's an 18-inch seating, and it's not a Peds wheelchair, but I would find it hard to believe a pediatric wheelchair would be able to easily maneuver in that space and transfer.
And like I had mentioned at the beginning, the survey is important, but it is one piece of the pie. And as Hannah had mentioned, in addition to the survey, Kids First did run roundtables for us back in the winter, seems like it was forever ago.
Maybe a few years ago.
It feels like it. But we did do a formal community presentation of all this information when it was fairly new, and they did roundtables for us. In addition to that, we did a series of community meetings that were led by the various departments that's relevant to the facilities process. We did two by Dr. Qualick on the student and redistricting process, which has already been set. We then did two on the facilities by Ryan O'Call, our Director of Business Affairs. And then we did two on curriculum instruction and pupil services by Mina Pizitka and Tina Cassidy. And then we did two on finances. We tried to do two, they were poorly attended, on finances. I think the first one, we had one individual attend. So we tried to make opportunities available to the broad community to be able to actually have open discussion about these facilities plans, because one of the things we did here early on is that they were complicated, and some misunderstandings, and the need for more intimate conversation about why we were moving some of these directions, or thinking about some of these directions. And despite some of them not being well-attended, we did have very good conversation. In addition to that, we also took time to go and meet specifically with the Garfield, as well as Heritage families. And we did that because of the major impact that these facility changes will have or could have, specifically on those communities. And what we did find is that the continual feedback that we received was very reflective of the results of the survey. We did hear many of the same things over and over again, in terms of concerns, in terms of likes, in terms of dislikes. You know, I believe- have specifically on those communities. And what we did find is that the continual feedback that we received was very reflective of the results of the survey. We did hear many of the same things over and over again in, in terms of concerns, in terms of likes, in terms of dislikes. You know, I, I believe that we really did see an overall support of the facilities projects that we were presenting. The question is, what kind of support is there for all of these projects upfront? And was already mentioned tonight, as well as throughout the survey, is the financial piece is not surprisingly a major concern. And a lot of questions about how can we roll out these potential facilities projects in a way that would be more manageable for our community, more palatable for our community, but still something that we would be able to accomplish. So we've worked within our code team to wrestle through that and come up with a plan to recommend to the board. And that's the next piece that I would like to discuss. And I do want to let the board know that we don't have a formal presentation for you on this because this is meant for discussion and conversation tonight. Our intent though is at an upcoming regular meeting to have a more formal presentation once we iron out some of the ideas this, this evening. But what, what we are recommending moving forward, and I don't know if we're able to pull up that chart that Chris put together, but I think that would be good to share. It's, it's the phased one that we put together last week. What we are recommending doing as a direction for these projects though, is taking a phased approach rather than an all-in-one approach in terms of accomplishing the facility needs for the district. It's very clear that there was heavy support to address Claggett as well as go the direction of the yellow plan with the single middle school and the upper elementary building. So it is our recommendation to move forward with the yellow plan and the focus to be on that yellow plan with the construction of a new Claggett and expansion of Root. In addition, in doing that, we would need to move forward with a stadium located across the street, which is in Claggett's current location, which would contain a track as well as a field, which would be a turfed facility. The intent of that stadium would be to serve our middle school, 7th and 8th students and athletics, as well as our soccer programming. In addition, we'd be looking at transitioning Heritage to helping, helping hands preschool for students with special needs. In order to do that, we would want to put minimal dollars into Heritage into, in order to transition it. So it would not be an ideal situation at Heritage, but it would provide the room and a facility to house that program. And I say it's not ideal, as Heather mentioned, the building really needs more major modifications or really a new building is, is what's needed in order to fully support those students. And that's why I say this is phase, would be phase one of this project. In addition, the Kent Duke's bleachers do need to be replaced. That is a safety issue. And from the comments and feedback that I've seen, I think that our community understands that that's something that needs to be done. I, I think where the hesitation has been that I've seen is taking the project to the next level and looking at putting locker rooms or concession stands or weight room underneath those bleachers. So what we would propose doing is moving forward with, at this time, simply replacing the bleachers. It would still be putting in a larger section of bleachers and making that our home side to expand the seating capacity in the stadium. We would also want to put those bleachers in, in, have our architects do it in a way where it would be possible in the future to put the other facilities underneath those stands at a later time. We would also want to-
If I interrupt for a second? I, I think there's been some community confusion too, so I just want to clarify. The new bleachers are new home bleachers and then the home bleachers become the visitors' bleachers. So I know there's been some confusion in the community about what are the new bleachers? Because the visitors' bleachers need to be replaced. That's what we would do. So apology for the interruption, but I just want to clarify-
No, this is an open discussion. And that's actually a conversation, we've been talking about those bleachers for a long time. I think it was my second year here that we replaced the turf. And we were talking about it back then because one of the conversations that I know Todd and I had with the turf company was the M on the middle of the field and making sure that when we replaced those turfs that we could flip the M because we want to make sure it's facing our home, home stands, which is something they said we can do. We also would like to move forward with the renovation of Garfield, preserving that building and making sure it is continuing to be utilized as a district facility is a priority to the district. And then Claggett demolition and Claggett abatement would need to be a part of this project as, as well. And then we would be looking at a phase two at a date to be determined. And I don't have a date for when a phase two would happen because it would be dependent on completion of the phase one as well as support of the phase one project. But the phase two project, we'd be looking at building the actual special education preschool program located on the Fenn site, as well as building a new elementary building over at the Heritage site. And that's why we wouldn't, would want to try and put minimal money into Heritage initially to convert it because the plan ultimately would be to build a new elementary building on that site and then demolition of Heritage and Fenn for those new facilities. And then adding the Duke's weight room over underneath the stands. In terms of projected costs to the project, this has a major impact on what we would be going out to the community for and asking them for. We will have a more detailed breakdown as we move forward with some of these decisions. I do ask Dave and Ryan to jump in. But we were talking today that in terms of a bond issue, we would be looking at approximately a 2.7, 2.47 mil bond issue for phase one. However, we have a couple of bond issues that are coming off. So to the community, that would actually be felt as a point-
To the community, we-
Go ahead.
I know, you were trying to remember here. I was trying to remember myself, but I wrote it down. With our current bond that we have, it's 2.2 mils that are charged to taxpayer. That's going to be dropping off in '28. So we want to schedule the bonds so that the, the bond levy, so that we would just be paying additional millage and that additional millage would be roughly a .27 mil to the community itself, which turns out to be, what did I say, around, what was it? Yeah, about $10, $5 to, depending, $10 to every $100,000 dollar home. So, yeah, it would, it would be very minimal the way we want to structure the bond and it would just be the additional funds itself that we're looking at. However, the levy itself needs to be placed out there as the full bond of, at this time we're estimating 2.47 mils.
In addition to that, we would also be recommending that our operating levy go up at the same time in November with the 2.475 mil bond issue. And this is something else that we've had a lot of discussion about. And one of the things that we wanted to share this evening is the approximate millage that that operating levy could be, as well as the collection period for that bond. Obviously, and I say it all the time, but the operating levy is of the highest priority because if we can't pay our teachers and our educators, it doesn't matter what buildings that we're in. We've been dedicated to not asking for new money until we need it. And we've been saying that for a long time. We also promised that we would go as long as we can before we ask for that money. We could theoretically go another couple of years before we ask for new money. The problem with doing that though, is that it would create a situation where the millage would be much higher than if we went ahead and asked for collection sooner. If we put an operating levy on the ballot in November with a, an immediate collection, we would be looking around a 6.5-ish, and these are estimates, mil operating levy, which is less than the emergency levy that we passed the last time. If we waited until we needed the, yes, Hoppin, needed the collection, we'd be looking at over an eight mil. So it's quite, quite a drastic difference on when we start collecting and how it hits the community's pockets.
Yes, with the operating levy, we were talking about looking at pushing the operating levy off until next year. If we, as Aaron says, if we go this year, the 6.5 mils would generate enough to, nothing the first year here to get us to at least '28 without looking back. Whereas if we wait for a year with the, with the spending down of our current balance, it would have to be an 8.5 mil levy, which would place on the taxpayer, I believe it's additional $90 for each $100,000 in value. So we were looking at getting the levy on a little bit sooner and getting the taxpayers' a break here of, I believe we were talking about 30% on the, on the levy itself, so.
Mr. Chambers, please remind me what it was our last emergency levy, how much that was? And that was in 2013, thank you.
Okay, it was a 5.9 mil levy and not a 6.9 mil levy, so. So yes, in 2013, it was 5.9 mils, emergency levy passed 58.24 to 41.76. And then the substitute levy that is continuing is a 5.2 mil levy, which is now down to 4.6 mils.
Can we ask questions now or you have more to do?
You always ask questions.
Okay. I've listened to all the different presentations and you guys have done. And I've heard repeatedly, cost, 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 you know. I just looked at my tax bill again today and my condo went up $30,000. I, I did appeal, but they compared me to a structure that was, had an extra floor and I just said, forget it at that point. I guess with, you know, eggs being $4.29 and gas going up higher and higher, I would like to see us start small and then go to the Claggett. That is the biggest cost item on here. What I would like to see, and I would totally support building the pre-K building over at Sydney Fenn, based on the figures, that's 18 to 20 million dollars. To renovate Heritage is, the estimate was 9 million. And I don't want to throw $9 million in a building that in five or 10 years we could tear down to build another one because that's just more wasted money that I, like I've seen happen in the schools. So I guess I'm looking at this as our absolute needs versus our wants. We can continue with Claggett and Root as they are right now for a couple of years, building a, you know, definitely doing-
All right, Ms. Pritchard, you said wait, do you mean Root?
I'm sorry, Root.
Okay.
Yeah, Root, I wish those buttons were switched because I get confused. Root and Claggett can continue on for the next couple of years. Hopefully prices will come down, things will come down, but do the preschool building, do the levy, that to me is our biggest need. Do that and do the bleachers for visitor slash home. And then let's just wait and see if that passes. Now, I know everyone's going, well, where are those kids from Sydney Fenn going? Well, I'm going to echo, I don't see the Medina community building another elementary building when they have a perfectly good building up on the square called Garfield. The kids who would go to Fenn can easily go to Garfield. Most of them should have gone to Garfield all along who lived out on Smith Road where they could just easily walk instead of being shipped over to Sydney Fenn. The kids who go to Sydney Fenn from Forest Meadows can be bused over to Garfield or walk, whatever they want to do. But I personally think that we need to start small before we jump into an $80 million project of Claggett, which then goes to a new stadium, a new this, a new that. Start small, see if we can get the community behind us on these smaller projects before we go knocking down middle school. That is, that is what I'm hearing over and over in the community. They are not, I mean, even though Claggett maybe need to be knocked down, they're not going for it. They're not, they don't want Claggett knocked down, like they don't want Garfield knocked down. So let's utilize the buildings that we have, which is what some of the people on the survey said. That's personally what I would like to see happen. But start small, get the, get the levy passed. That to me is the most important thing we need to pay our people and to make the academics the best that they can be. Do the bleachers and build a new pre-K. And this pre-K will be everything that we need probably for the next 20 or 30 years. But who knows what education's going to look like in 10 years at this point. So that, that's just my opinion. I, I mean, I appreciate all the hard work, but there's one other thing, out of the 20,000, and it's not 20,000, it's under that, over, I got this, this took me time, but I did it. 12,272 people in Medina City School District are 55 years and older. Over 10,000 are over 60. They are not going to vote for this. They just aren't. I'm, I'm in a whole community where there's only two children that are running around and they're not voting for it. They're not going to raise their taxes, not that high. They would probably give you the small amounts, but they're not going to give you that money for Claggett. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. And the, the results are a little different than what you said, the survey results. And I think what I've been hearing is different than what you've been hearing because we live in different- live in different demographic communities. One thing I do think that we need to make sure is communicated is, what I've been hearing is, a lot of the people think the Claggett and Root is happening when the Heritage and when our elementary schools-
The redistricting.
Thank you, redistricting. There's some confusion, and they think that's part of the redistricting. They don't understand that we actually have, that the Claggett and Root is not going to happen if we don't pass a bond levy. So I'm still hearing that as of last week. So I think we need to make sure that we do communicate that the Claggett and Root is only going to happen if the bond passes. And that is something we've been talking about since 2019, I think, the need for the change in the buildings and the middle schools. And I think there is, yeah, it was, it was 2019, it was before the pandemic, we were having the community meetings, which were very highly attended at that time, supporting the 5, 6, and the 7, 8 buildings. I think that needs to be a priority. I don't think that is a want, I think that is a need.
Okay. I guess my comment is this, I like the 5, 6, 7, 8, but we can, we as a district can survive with them remaining as they are right now until we can see if we can get one thing passed, which would be operating levy, preschool, and building a new stadium, or not a new stadium, new bleachers. You know, that's feasible for the voters of Medina. And I think that's what we have to look at. What do we think that they are going to pass? And they are not going to pass this. They are not.
Well, I feel like we actually tried to address what you're actually bringing up. And if you look at priorities, and when they came into the assessment of the district, Claggett was actually the number one or number two building that was identified as needing to be addressed. And I have, by the OFCC, and I have major concerns that we have students who are currently in trailers in the building there, and that would continue to attend school in trailers in the building. And we have heard that from the community, and that's why we have restructured the plan and reduced the scale of what we're looking towards with the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. And our hope is to move forward with the Phase 2. You know, I said Phase 2 is to be determined, because it's all dependent upon community support down the road and what happens with Phase 1. But when you're talking about increasing taxes and the impact and burden to the community with the Phase 1, and being able to provide a new facility and an adjustment to the academic grade levels for our students, we were talking about a minimal increase with the bond issue dropping off. So we did try and take that into consideration. Dave, how much were we estimating the yearly impact with the bonds dropping off?
With the bond dropping off? We were saying .27 mils, which I checked it out, is $9.45 per 100,000.
Per year?
Per year.
So that would be the increase per year to move forward with the Phase 1 project?
With the Phase 1 of the bond.
$9.45?
Correct. So you're talking about-
I don't know what Starbucks costs. I don't go, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of things, too. No one wants to have to pay increased taxes. No one wants to have increased costs. Unfortunately, we reach a point in time where we have to do something. And not everybody's going to be happy. And I think the district has done a good job so far of trying, of listening to the community and trying to come together and come up with a plan that will appeal to the most people. Because the bottom line is, we have to take care of our kids, we have to provide for our kids. And these are things that we have been talking about for such a long time. And I have learned to be much more patient since being on the school board, because I do like to see much more immediate results, and that doesn't always happen. And I get frustrated when we have to kick the can down the road, whether it's because of COVID or whatever the reason is. But I appreciate everyone's hard work. And again, this is an exciting time, and we need to look at this and make sure we communicate this, as it's an investment in our community, it's an investment in our kids. With the visiting bleachers, those, if we don't replace those, it's not going to be safe. And I think people also forget that we host tournaments, and I know we're probably going to get to this with Athletic Update, but we host OHSA tournaments, we get money for hosting those tournaments. Our community benefits when we host those tournaments, because we get people coming in from other communities that then go to our restaurants, they shop at our stores. So it is, it has far-reaching effects. And I think we need to remind people of that as well. I'm sorry, Mr. Sabley, may continue.
Yeah. Of course.
So I hear what, I hear what you're saying, Jean, and Mrs. Parker, so I just want to, I think, though, what, the phased approach is kind of doing that, though, right? Isn't it kind of, it's saying, don't reach for the stars, but let's just do part of it now, see what happens, and then maybe, because you don't know when Phase 2 is going to happen. And we really, it's true, we haven't asked for new money in 10 years since that emergency levy. So, and I hear what you're saying, Ms. Pritchard, but I kind of see that what's, the administration is kind of doing what you're saying, though. It's kind of phasing it in.
Well, I, yeah, I understand, and I agree, but I'm saying, let's flip and do Phase 2 first because of economic conditions. Building a new preschool is the cheapest thing that we can do along with the bleachers. I don't think anybody in this room has a problem with the bleachers. I mean, but by, when you build Claggett, and if it's the sprawling model that we've shown, compared to maybe two floors, which is cheaper to go up than out, maybe we could save the Memorial Stadium. But I'm just saying, as soon as you build Claggett, it's a domino effect, because then you need a new soccer place, and then you need this, and then you need that. So what I'm saying, let's be good stewards, let's get something for our students, and let's just do Phase 2 first. And if we can pass that, then maybe the next year we can come back and pass Claggett and Root. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. I want to get back to, I'm sure the administration's maybe addressing maybe what you're talking about with these different, the timing of things, it looks like on the agenda. So maybe we can hear some of that and then comment some more.
Hey, just one more question. So OFCC money is-
I might talk about that.
Done, okay.
Yeah, since you brought up the OFCC, and we're bouncing around a little bit here, too. But I think one thing we really need to be cognizant of, and we're talking about moving kids and closing buildings and tearing down buildings, and that's something we haven't done in our school district. I mean, with all the growth and change, and, you know, for me personally, that's something I've heard loud and clear from many of our parents and our community members, that's something that internally we've said we need to do a better job on as a district, is being aware of that and addressing that and recognizing that as we're moving forward. And because these are emotional and difficult decisions, because our district is so much a part of our community. And as difficult as it makes things, that passion brings me confidence in moving forward and collaborating and making the right decisions. In terms of the OFCC, it is my recommendation not to proceed with the OFCC and to formally notify the OFCC that we will not be proceeding with their support. And I have brought this up previously at other board meetings. The reason why is because the constraints that they put on us in terms of the plans that they want us to follow do not put us in the best position for building facilities for our students. We've shared at previous meetings how their recommendation is actually to house, was it sixth graders here at the high school? You're talking about pretty drastic changes to the structure and outline of our school district, which aren't acceptable. And the more we deviate from the OFCC's plan, the less money we receive from them. And it could actually end up, in the long run, costing us more money to do the projects, because they have so many stringent guidelines that need to be followed when you're using In terms of timelines, and I'm going to turn it over to Ryan a little bit in terms of the timeline, but a lot of that is really dependent upon the passage of the bond, the availability of materials. Our intent at the regular April or May meeting was to have a formal presentation of the direction that we would actually be going, with more detailed breakdown of what the costs would look like. We have not been discussing specific numbers today. We've been giving you estimates. But it would be the board taking action in regards to putting a bond issue and operating levy on the ballot heading into the early summer, late spring, as early as June, I think we had discussed. And we hope that Kids First will continue to work for us, or with us, and they would be playing a major role, especially heading into the mid, late summer and into the fall, when we would be advertising this. And the goal, really, for the remainder of this school year would be communications. So Amy would be very busy and working with all of us to make sure that we keep the community informed of the direction that we're going. In terms of actual facilities, assuming that the bond issue would pass, the kind of projections that we've gotten is it could be anything from a year to two years to three years, depending on the availability of materials and contractors. Typically, the projects do happen more quickly when you're not working with the OFCC. If you look at some of our surrounding districts that have moved forward with these projects, you've seen that they've had similar type of timelines. Highland put up three elementary buildings in a matter of a year. Three elementary buildings are smaller projects, they did not use the OFCC. I think Brunswick, just below us, it took them two, two and a half years to put up their middle school, which was a fairly large project. But they were also dealing with COVID at the tail end of that as well. So that fits within that timeline. It would be my recommendation, after those projects were complete, then to reassess Phase 2 and where we would go from there. In terms of the November levy, and I don't like to talk this way, but I think it's something that has to be considered. But if the bond didn't pass, if we were to tie these two together, and the bond and the levy didn't pass, we would need to have further conversation in terms of those levies and how to proceed, and how those would impact these projects. To me, though, that operating levy is extremely important for the district's future. And it would be hard for me to not see that as a major focus if this bond didn't pass, and I could see it having a major impact on these overall projects. Anything to add, Ryan, or?
No, I mean, with, we will have to start construction summer '23, '24 on Heritage to prepare that for-
Yeah, we have to.
We will have to do that, yes.
Well, and I think that's an important part, important point as well, is that the redistricting has been approved and is moving forward. So we are in a situation where Garfield and Heritage are going to be open buildings. So if we have no bond passing at all, if nothing passes for sure, right now, the preschool program is going over to Heritage. And I know the $9 million was brought up, I think the $9 million was for more extensive-
Yeah, we would not be doing that extensive of a project to use Heritage as a preschool.
Yeah, that was for more of a long-term renovation project. We'd be looking for something more short-term than the $9 million. But the other piece is Garfield as well. And we want to make sure that those buildings are continuing to be utilized. And we have had other discussions of how to utilize some of those facilities if we weren't using the money to, or didn't have the money in order to move the board office over there. And we did throw around some ideas in terms of utilizing it for our Evolve Academy or for some other student programming in the district as well. I do want to turn it over. I think it's important we bring up athletics this evening, especially because we did get quite a bit of feedback on athletics through the survey and the community discussions. And I think one thing that can be easily overlooked is, just like when we talk about facilities and we need to do something with our students while we're building and moving facilities around, it's easy to forget that it's the same thing with athletics. As we're building buildings that are currently practice fields or game fields, we can't just cancel sports. So Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to, a couple other things I want to clarify. We wanted to clarify the bleachers piece, and I'll let Todd and Mason add anything else. But I think there was some confusion in the community, and I appreciate Kids First bringing some of those to light, too, that the bleachers, again, I'll just reiterate it again, because I don't think we can communicate enough. The new bleachers would be the home bleachers, so there'll be a little bit of an expansion to allow for more space. And then the home bleachers will become the new visitors' bleachers. And so it will, as well, some of us, Todd, Mason, and myself, get calls when people come. So I appreciate what Jean said, and I agree, I think we're all on the same page. That's a necessity. But I think tonight, we wanted to also provide, I think voters, we've learned to need and like information in order to be educated as voters, and I agree, I think as Jean shared, we need to give information, because I, it's hard, depending on what circle you run in, you're hearing different information. So I think the only thing we can do tonight, and our purpose is to give information, because as the three of us were hearing things, I think we want the community to be aware how many student athletes there are in the district, and how some of these different things impact our student athletes, and how much of a student athlete population we have in the district. So we could leave here knowing we've provided that information. So that was the piece. The other piece I want to make clear, I know Ryan, Amy, and myself met with a large group of community members who were concerned about, one of the options we had was a stadium, and Ryan, feel free to jump in, but being located on the Rec Center property. So I want to clarify that our proposal does not contain that at this time. We took their feedback and concerns, so there is no proposal for a turfed stadium-
Yeah, I do have a few guaranteed votes out of Forest Meadows, so, just so you guys know.
Again, we want to, we're making some side jokes, but I just want to make sure people know, there were some very serious concerns. And we want to know that those community meetings, things we had, we did take input from those meetings. We heard people's concerns and tried to adjust our plan based on the information we heard in those meetings. But what we also heard is that people want high school students access to fields to be as close as possible to the high school. So we do that as much as we can. Obviously, bowling, golf, you can't necessarily, although it would be nice, to build a golf course around the high school. Some you can't, but for the most part, I think the community feedback we got was, we don't want the students to have to drive across town to access their stadium or their facility. So you do the best you can in these situations to take all the information, make the best possible plan. So again, I think our purpose tonight is to kind of share some information. But what we're going to start with is, as Aaron shared, a transition. So if we are lucky enough to have a bond passed where we are building a 7, 8, remember that the plan includes tearing down Memorial Stadium. remember that the plan includes tearing down Memorial Stadium. So what are we going to do during that time? Again, we know the community feedback was about 38.27%. We're not in favor of turfing Root, but remember, that was for it to become Memorial Stadium. So what if we do pass a bond for a seven, eight building to be built? What are we going to do during those three years? Where are we going to put our student athletes? So keep that question in mind as Todd and Mason kind of give you the background of athletics in Medina City Schools.
I was going to, they're going to share a microphone. I'm like, yeah, all right.
We're not as popular. We understand.
Thank you, everybody, for having us here this afternoon, this evening. We hope to, like Dr. Qualick said, just give you some information on the athletic programs and some of the numbers that we have. Yeah. Dr. Qualick said with the transition process, and Mr. Sable was discussing, you know, we always think about from an educational perspective, and I want to first say, I saw one of the notes and comments up there from the survey that academics and facilities should be our priority, and they are in this district. The athletic department totally 100% agrees with that, of course, but we also view extracurricular activities as an extension of the classroom where many life lessons are learned and can be taught through our athletic programs. And like Mr. Sable said, with the educational perspective, we have transition, and when we have transition, we need to think about where, if certain fields are not accessible for our students and community members, what are we going to do? Just like if a school building is being renovated or constructed, trailers are going to be used, some other form or mode of housing those students. The same will be true with our athletic department. So again, if this takes potentially as long as three years with the construction, we want to make sure there is little to no interruption in providing facilities for our student athletes, our students, our community, our feeder programs. A lot of different people utilize our facilities on a day-to-day basis throughout the school What, some of the things that might happen and will happen during that three-year building, six soccer teams. We do have three boys soccer teams, and we have three girls soccer teams here at Medina High School, varsity and two JV programs. Also, and they utilize Memorial both for games and practice purposes. We also have middle school football that utilizes those areas for practice. Track and field, we have the track facility that our middle schools and also community members do use throughout the day. And also our softball team, because our JV softball field, Homestead, is located on the same property. What other groups? It's not just Medina students, they are first and foremost, but we also house Special Olympics, the National Guard, different and various police departments in our community, NYBA, our Girls Softball Association, our feeder programs, the Miss, the Begadue, different CrossFit programs, and people throughout the community use our facilities and use these facilities, as well as Medina Christian Academy and as well as St. Francis Xavier, they also use our facilities as well. So this will have an impact, would have an impact on many, many people. Just some data for, to help inform, the number of high school student athletes we have, we have 2,157 students enrolled here at Medina High School. Of that number, 858 are student athletes. Individual student athletes, 858. Do the math, and I had to use a calculator, of course, 30, about a high 39, nearly 40% or two out of five of every student that walk the halls here at Medina or the Career Center or are taking educational opportunities, other places, two out of every five are involved in an athletic program, and many are multi-sport athletes as well, not just one sport, but multiple sports. Mr. Harper?
Thank you. So for the middle school piece, 1,421 of our students enrolled between Claggett and Root. 428 of those are student athletes as well, so it's 30% of those are student athletes.
Again, those, and those numbers probably, hope to show that, you know, it's a large population of our student body that are involved in these extracurricular activities that, again, provide many life lessons. At the high school as well with our sports, we have about 26 different sports here at the high school. That includes 60 different teams. So the 26 sports are our programs, and we have, within those 26, 60 different teams at various levels, freshmen, JV and varsity. So when people think about high school sports, I think a lot of times they think only of the varsity programs. We have many more teams than just our varsity programs and our varsity teams practicing and playing here at Medina. Same is true at the middle school.
Yeah, so for middle school, we have seven different sports that are sponsored, and we have 31 different teams between seventh and eighth grade levels between the two middle schools.
And with that, that volume of teams and programs, that means we have a lot of contests. And we have 437 high school home contests that have been scheduled between August 1st of this past 2022 to the end of the school year, basically June 1st, 2023. And that's not including practices. So when I say 437 contests and events, that's just the games. That's scrimmages. Those are, that's not including the practices that are taking place, and obviously to play the best you can in your competitions, you want to have as many practices as possible. And again, 437, when I found that number, I was, I knew we had a lot, but that's more than 365 days out of the school year, or out of the calendar year.
And for the same dates, August 1st, '22 through June 1st, '23, between Claggett and Root, we have 139 home contests scheduled. And again, that does not include practices.
And that's, and again, a lot of our middle school teams do utilize our high school facilities. And again, when we can't get on certain facilities for our high school teams, we utilize Root, Claggett and some of our elementary and other facilities around the district as well, which happens quite often, I'll add. We use those numbers, and it's great data, but to understand an average day of what our athletic department looks like, I think, you can't do it, first off, because every day is somewhat different. Every schedule looks a little different year to year, day to day. But for an average day here at the high school in the fall, just the fall sports season, let's take Monday, and I'm going to read through one day and, because we have five different, or six different, seven different slides, and it's quite expansive. When you have, let's talk Memorial as a site. We have girls or boys soccer. We have six different teams. Girls on a Monday might either be playing a triple header, 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock and 7 o'clock. And to understand Memorial's facility, we have a lighted facility where Memorial Stadium is, and we also have a practice field that serves as our alternate game field for the lower levels, our different JV teams. So in order to provide those three teams on a Monday, we would have to have those facilities available probably by 4:30 at the latest because of warm-up time and different things. So when I say 5 o'clock, that's just when we're going to probably start. And to get those games in, we need to start at 5 o'clock because a lighted field at Memorial is for the 7 o'clock game for our varsity program, which does require lights. Middle school football practice is on that same, at that same facility during the same time, practicing right next to that field. Girls soccer practice is probably taking place if they don't have games at night on that practice field as well. So again, depending on what the schedule looks like, it can vary. Football practice here at the high school, we have our varsity and JV programs on the field from 2:30 to 7. We put to 7, the varsity program usually is going to go 2:30 to 5, and then our freshman team, which does practice separate because we have a large freshman number of athletes for football, will go from 5 to 7 o'clock. Rugby workouts, if they can get on a field periodically in the fall. Youth gridiron would love to get on the turf because sometimes those fields get wet. I encourage you, if you check the corner of Route 3 and Union, just to see what those grass fields take just when you get some bad weather. It doesn't take much to get those grass fields muddy, padded down, and that's after a day-to-day use of those fields. So they like to get on the Dukes if they can, which is very, very rare because we have things going on all hours of the day usually. Boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse would like to work out there at Dukes when available. And again, if they're getting on, they're probably getting on at 7 o'clock until 9 o'clock at night with lights on possibly, just so we can give them the appropriate workouts, practice sessions, just so they are prepared for what they're going to be doing in the spring. Cross-country teams will use our track here at Duke, so it's not just football in the fall. The cross-country teams run around the track as well as around the community, but they are going to use the track and do different types of training sessions for themselves. Put this all together, and this is just Monday, by the way, I apologize, but the field is in use until up to 10:30 PM some nights, and that's not uncommon. If you drive by, you'll probably see the lights on. I go to Tuesday, you know, those are the games, usually soccer does have games, the others practicing. It's a very similar schedule, so I don't want to, again, bore you or keep going through the same thing and be redundant, but you look at a Wednesday here, same thing, we have games going on over at Memorial. Now we're throwing in middle school football games over here at Dukes because if we, if and when we have two teams, Claggett is going to play over here on the turf at Dukes, which means that our varsity football team needs to either shorten or be off the field in time so we can start at an appropriate time for our middle school students. And then that probably means if we have a middle school game here at Dukes, that the other teams aren't going to be on the field, and if they do get on the field, they're not going to be on the field until 8 o'clock, 7:30, which just means later and later times, which again, for our students, we want our students to be home as early as possible for many reasons. One, so they have time with family. Two would be educational reasons, so they can study, and then three, so they can get to bed at a reasonable time because they got to be up the next day for school. We're not always able to do that to be able to provide the opportunities for our student athletes appropriately. And again, it's, we have one turf field that's able to do this right now at this time. Thursday, same type of thing, and then we also throw in some middle school B football games to provide, now that we only had one grade-level football team at Root and Claggett this past year, they combined, which again, it just means we also have freshman football, which is going to possibly be home every other week or at least five times out of the fall. Again, it just causes a lot of scheduling that we have to work, and we work it out. We're fortunate to have, have a plan, but again, it's a lot, and I don't know if everyone understands how much it actually, the volume that we take on day-to-day. And then on a Friday, again, if we don't, if we have varsity football, varsity football is going to have a game that night. Boys and girls soccer practice will probably try to get out on the turf because they may be playing on a turf field that weekend. Freshmen football still need to practice, probably somewhere on the turf. If not, we try to get them on a grass field, but again, we don't know how the weather and those grass fields are holding up in the fall after a lot of practice. And then, again, go to a Saturday, JV football, girls soccer and boys soccer. We have used Dukes before, especially during COVID and different timeframes, and if there's scheduling conflicts, we have used Dukes. And sometimes those games, if all six soccer teams are playing at home on a Saturday, that's from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and that means that facility is taken up. So either Memorial or Dukes or a mix. Gridiron likes to get on there in the morning if they can, but again, if we have JV football going on, that's not going to happen that day. And then there were times where middle school football likes to get on a surface, either Memorial's practice field and/or Dukes and the turf. And then on a Sunday, maybe a little more lean, which it probably should be, our youth gridiron though, they do, and they just, they like to get on the field from 9:30 to 4:00 PM sometimes. So again, all that being said, it's a, it's a lot. And I guess the options during this time.
Todd and I will share this, but what we wanted to present to the board is, there's a variety of different options then, but one point we wanted to make is, it's very unusual nowadays for a district our size to only have one turf field. And so whatever we decide to do, whatever the board decides to do, we just wanted to share that with you because as we were out, as Kids First was out, I think you shared too, as elementary parents, you might not have that information. So as you're, as you're making choices, you might not know, you might be there with your kids as they play youth football, you might not, you might be coming to a game not realizing how many people are out on the field or how many sports we have. We're one of the largest districts in the state. I don't know that everyone knows that either. So we looked at a variety of options. Mr. Sable and I talked, we talked as a central office team. One of the options was using the city field. So a number of us toured with the city, all the different fields that are available. So that could be an option during those three years to utilize the city fields, and I'll let Todd jump into. The problem would be the city doesn't, and Mr. O'Call, you can jump into, the city doesn't have any turf fields to utilize either, not one with lights, not one with stands. So we could upgrade one of their fields, but then it's not really our field. So presenting the options to the board, the problem is we would put funds into a city field that then we don't have the scheduling rights to. It's not our field, but that's one option we could talk about. The next one is, can you rent from other districts? So people have done this in the past, you call up, let's just pick Brunswick and say, hey, can we rent from you for these three years? The problem is Todd did some of that work, I'll let him share.
Yeah, I was able to speak with Brunswick and Highland, different sized districts, but very close to us proximity-wise. And I asked them the question, if this, if we needed help, if we took some of our fields out of play, would it be possible to be able to utilize their fields? And again, as helpful and as collegial as we are, and we work together with one another, they know, you kind of saw what our schedule looks like, their schedules look very similar. Highland only has one turf field, and everybody wants to get on that one turf field, so they, we're not sure they would be able to give us the time necessary for the games we would need and/or if any practices. And Brunswick was kind of the same way with that, knowing that the limited resources and fields. The other thing we'd be talking about this is transportation to those fields, transportation costs. We would also be talking about our workers being able to get there, and being able to wiggle around their schedules would be very interesting. We're able to adapt and we're flexible, but we would also be at the mercy of some of those other districts.
So the last, sorry, the last option is just something we wanted to put on the table too, and understanding and being aware this is different than what we had put in the survey, which is, do you, sorry, do you want to move soccer to Root? This is a different option, which is, do we turf Root, put lights, put bleachers? Lights could be a longer-term thing, but it provides us a solution to this and then allows the district a long-term turf field that allows our kids not to be on the field till 10:30 at night. It gives us another option. It's ours then, long-term. So it's something else we wanted to present and provide and give the background to, and I'll let Todd add some more as well.
And as I was, as we put those together with the five days, that was just fall. When we talk spring and we talk a winter sports season, transition into a spring sports season, that happens actually in early, or late February, early March. That's when those seasons start. And there are some nice days, I doubt they're getting on the fields per se, but some of our baseball, our lacrosse teams, our softball teams, they want to get on turf, at least to go outside and do some, some throwing. That turf field, when the season starts, track's going to be out there most likely, lacrosse, because that's their playing surface. Again, we're trying to schedule different things with those turf fields, so it's not just a fall thing. This would also be something that does impact our spring sports as well when we're trying to get those up and go, up and running.
So our last slide again, and keeping in perspective what Jean shared as well, you can't always have it all, right? And you want to bite off a little bit at a time, but, but why? So where does this fit in? I'm not exactly sure, but again, we want to provide the information so people understand why is there a need? And Todd shared a little bit of the first one, you know, all the different teams that could use it. It allows our students, I don't know that people know kids are out on, unless your kids are, out here till 10:30 at night because we don't have the facilities for that. And that's a long day for kids that are getting up at 6 to start the school day. So we just wanted to provide the information and make sure. The other piece is, a lot of people think, eh, you can go out there in the mud and it's fine and you can just play. And is that true? Sure, but it's a different day and age now. Kids are playing year-round. There's a lot more wear and tear, and it's just not the same. I don't know how better to say that other than it's just not the same. So I think it's important to know, and if anyone was around for the Begadue a couple years ago when our fields got torn up, they'll know how much work it took the city and us to repair those. So it's not that you can play on them and not cause damage. I know Mr. O'Call, and I would, not me, really, you, we're trying to put together some numbers on what does it cost to keep repairing grass fields versus turfing it? And I'm going to guess that some, you know, we'll have, can have some numbers for you, but I would think long-term turf is probably a better benefit than to keep having people out on the grass and the damage it does. And no offense. And no offense to the begatway, I just realized, it was not the begatway people, it was the weather, so just to clarify. I don't know, Ryan, if you want to add, we did have a lengthy discussion about, you know, grass and the upkeep.
And I was looking, I provided Todd with a study that was done by another school district, the 10-year, they did a 10-year cost of natural grass to field turf, and they were finding that the natural grass was costing them about $52,000 a year to maintain mow and just the normal upkeep. And then they were doing $5,000 a year for, for the maintenance on turf. And as we know, we put $50,000 a year into the replacement of Ken Duke's. So you could be upside $2,500 by going to turf fields.
So.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so then the Root field would be the temporary until we get Memorial, and then we would end up having essentially three turf fields? It's kind of the.
I think that would be, that would be a real win for the athletic department and the district as a whole.
Yeah. Okay.
I appreciate all of that information. I do know we have left here on Monday evenings, and there are kids out there on the, on the field practicing late on Mondays, all year round, not just fall or spring, all year round. And it's interesting to the community groups that use our facilities, and I think there's even more, I think you just mentioned those for the fall or that use Claggett Field, there's a whole bunch that use the rec center, and I think sometimes people don't realize that area around the rec center is our property, correct?
Yes, it is. And I think one of the sports that wasn't mentioned much, but rugby, and rugby uses a lot of those rec fields for practice purposes. I know there's a lot of times that the coaches, when it gets too muddy, it's, it's just, it's hard to get anything accomplished when it becomes like that.
Thank you, and I do have, I was just talking to some parents actually this week that were kind of complaining about the late night practices, understanding they know, especially when it's springtime and the weather is bad, trying to utilize the gym for softball and baseball and lacrosse, or maybe they go to the rec center and you've got track. I mean, people do understand, there's a lot of teams trying to get that limited amount of space. So I appreciate this analysis because it would benefit the district, I think, in the long, in the short term while we were doing the construction, but in the long term as well, to have that extra, extra space.
And we didn't put that in here, but Todd and Mason can speak to it. You could have baseball and softball, I think you briefly mentioned it, outside more if you have turf, when they can't be on a field because of rain or other things, you can be on turf. So it is hard when they're inside.
Yeah, especially on a sunny day and we have a practice inside, it's like, why are we inside? Well, the ground, the grass, the dirt is still not safe or playable, so makes it a little better. Yeah, we don't want them throwing in parking lots.
We do have some of the youth baseball team that do rent our parking lots for baseball practice though.
So. I'm thinking over at Claggett, the Memorial Field, I remember initially there was talk of turning the building sideways across those parking, or those practice fields, but there was a large drainage tile or something that runs under there, and you were checking.
Sanitary sewer runs.
You were checking to see if that could be moved, so basically be under Memorial, is that not?
And it comes down to dollars and cents to move that, is the problem. It would be expensive to move. We're also talking about 155,000 square foot facility. We wouldn't be able to move it to get it, to be able to build a middle, 155,000 square foot middle school.
And that's a single-story building?
That's a two-story building.
Two-story. And then the fields that are over by the rec center, they're a mud, you're saying they're mud fest, I've been on them. That's just all basically backfill with no draining, drainage or anything underneath there to carry the water away, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct. So that's something that if some, if tile or drainage through a turf company was put in, that could improve the quality of those fields and make them better usable, correct?
That is correct.
Because you're going to need, you want a turf field, but you still need grass fields for all of these practices, you can't.
We need fields for all of these practices, we don't necessarily need grass fields.
Turf fields.
We would prefer turf.
Well, I know that, but, but turf fields are also a million dollars plus.
Yes, but, but just to put it in perspective, and I'm going to ask Todd to go back to the Wayback Machine here, we re-crowned the high school soccer field, and I don't know how many years ago that was, but that was a million dollar project to re-crown a grass field.
And the reason we all hesitated when you said that is because I, there's some drainage issues in that area by the rec, and I don't know that we want to mess with drainage in that area because it, it may impact the houses in that area. So I don't know that we want to mess with the drainage in that area if, if there's, just to keep it grass, if that's fair enough. We had a large meeting with the community members in that area, and there's a lot of drainage issues in that area.
Sorry, I know, there's homes all the way around there. I guess my point is, even if there was, you know, if you turf Root, you now have two turf fields and we put lights on, now you've got a lot more expansion there, but you're still going to need grass fields, and those are disappearing if Claggett goes across the street for practice.
I don't think we need more grass fields in addition to the turf fields, is that, I shouldn't keep grabbing the mic from Todd.
Yeah, I mean, fields are fields, we need, we need space, you are correct. So what we're going to lose if we start this project at Memorial, we will lose a varsity field, a JV field, and a football practice field. So we are losing essentially three fields. That's why I think it's imperative that we have another turf facility that we can use, because you can utilize turf more than you can a grass field.
So are you talking like with those photos you showed us up there in Sandusky, so it would be a combo like football slash soccer slash baseball slash softball type facility? Is that what you're kind of thinking? Is that what you guys are kind of thinking?
Yeah, more of the field sports.
Yeah, I don't think baseball and softball, that, those fields would more be just for practice purposes or to get out and throw for baseball and softball.
I have a question, we have all that land at Canavan. I mean, I know that's, it used to be where they played ponytail softball, I don't know whether they still use it. Is it, I don't know how good those fields are, any chance that, I mean, I know it's cross-country thing.
It is the cross-country, I believe, Jim, oh, Jim's not still here. I think Mother Nature took over a few of the softball fields that are there, they're in pretty poor condition.
They, I live over that way, they are, they, they haven't been maintained unfortunately for years, they're in bad shape. Mr. O'Call, you gave the comparison of maintaining a grass field. Can you remind me what the useful life is for our turf? I know we re-turfed it.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Todd too, because this newer turf is supposedly better than the first round, and it went 10 years?
10 years, and it was, at the end of it, it was fading. I mean, that's the reason why we looked at the new turf. And then the company that we went with, as well as some of the underneath layer, they believe we can get 12 to 15 years out of this new turf. So when we say 10 years, that would be the short, I mean, we talked today, we're seven years into the new turf, and the turf looks pretty. We get complimented all the time about how nice it looks, and we're about, we're definitely over the halfway point for 10 years, but about at the halfway point, if not more, so.
Yeah, this is seven, correct, on that?
Yeah.
And this would unlock, obviously not an astronomical amount, but a little bit of additional income if we were to have two or even three fields, because I know the high school tournaments, at least for soccer, they require you to have a turf field for a host site, so, I mean, there's a bunch more.
And we've been asked to host before, and we usually use Duke's, which, and it's lined for it. We don't make an astronomical amount, like you said, from those tournaments, but I think a lot of it is just having the opportunity to be able to do that and showcase Medina. I don't, again, it, people look at Medina as a beacon, as something to be proud of when they come here. We get, we get the smaller schools who come here for volleyball and these different tournaments, and they, they're enamored, what they see is just wow. And it's a great thing, but.
And student council can reap the rewards because they run the concession stands at those events, so.
They make more, yeah, they do well.
Do we know offhand about how many of those tournaments we have, whether it be soccer or basketball, volleyball? Because I don't think the community knows how often we host.
So in the fall, we host Division III volleyball districts now. We host football, usually a lower division right now, usually a D5, D6, or D7 game, once or twice, depends on what they ask of us. In the winter, we host the girls' basketball district tournament here. They were so impressed with the way, what we had and the facilities we have here, they asked us to host the Division I regional tournament this past year for girls' basketball, which was an amazing atmosphere if anyone had a chance to be here for it. We also host the Division IV baseball tournaments out, district tournament here in the spring, as well as when lacrosse, if we host a game early on in the tournament, we'll host all those games as well, soccer, lacrosse, all those. So we do have a lot of OHSA tournament usage here.
I keep trying to steal it from Todd, just to say something too, those aren't requirements either, and I think it speaks well for our district and allows us to maintain a good relationship with OHSA. So none of those are required, they're all extras that are done too. And I'll tell you one story, because I don't think people do appreciate sometimes, we, when it was one of the football games, some division I didn't know existed, six or seven, I was at the pack at an event, and some of the kids came through and they're like, oh my gosh, do you have a dome? They thought our pack was our football stadium, and they thought we had a dome, and so we got them through to where the football stadium was. But there are kids that just marvel at what we have. No, you're good.
And the same, they, a lot of people, we have a lot of parking lots, obviously, so obviously the B3 doors are where we'd like people to come in for the indoor sports, a lot of them will park over by the pack and the rec center, and they're like, we thought this was it, and we're like, you're just not a part of it. But they are just, they are very impressed with what Medina City Schools, our facilities.
Thank you.
I just had one more question. Was it, Brian, was there any talk, any possibility of keeping Memorial Stadium, or is that totally out of the question?
The architects are very confident that it's not going to fit on the facility as it sits. Yeah. We will not have any parking on that site if, if we move, if we tried to preserve the soccer stadium, there would be no, no place to park. It would have to be across the street.
So that would be the, okay, that's where all the staff and everybody would.
Yeah.
I have one question, what if we moved Claggett as close to Memorial Pool at the end of our property? Is there any, I mean, it should fit there. Is there any chance that we could save the stadium at that point?
According to them, according to the architects, there's not enough room. So I don't, I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't know what, we don't have a specific drawing right now, but they're, they're just using 155,000 square foot, two-floor middle school, and they say it's not going to fit on that property with Memorial there.
And there's probably certain requirements from the road and other things to take into consideration.
I don't want to throw this conversation off, but the cafeteria staff keeps looking in here, I think they'd like to clear the food, so if people want to go eat, they've gone by here twice already, so.
We will discuss and eat, everyone help yourselves.
Right. Okay. The, the last thing that we wanted to discuss with the board this evening is House Bill I. And I know that Dave and I have sent you some information regarding House Bill I, but House Bill I could be or will be majorly impactful on school districts as well as cities and municipalities, if it does pass the Ohio legislation. And what House Bill I would do is, it would take income tax dollars or property tax dollars away from school districts, and Dave's our resident expert on House Bill I, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
House Bill I, they're advertising it as a reduction in income tax. The way they're going to pay for it is by taking away the 10% rollback and reducing the 2.5% rollback to property taxpayers. So taking that away will automatically increase property taxes. However, in order to alleviate that, they want to reduce the valuation adjustment that the property taxpayers pay. So currently you pay 35% of your value towards taxation. What they want to do is reduce that by 10%, down to 31.5% of your valuation. This is all fine and dandy for the state, because then that'll give the state all that money that they give to schools and municipalities and townships and any taxing agency, it's fine and dandy. But what happens then, excuse me while I pick up my napkin, what happens then is, all those agencies have levies that they will then lose monies on. And in order to offset this, anybody that has a levy that was placed out after 1976 is subject to House Bill 920. House Bill 920 basically says if your property taxes go up, or sorry, if your property valuation goes up, your property taxes go down, because what was voted on in 1976 or before was, let's say it was $3 million that the levies produced. Well, as your valuations go up, the taxes go down, and here, 20 years later, you're still paying that $3 million. So what happens when your valuations go down? House Bill 920 kicks in. So valuations go down, your property taxes will go up in order to offset and still make that $3 million. So what we're looking at here is, if the state goes through with House Bill, or sorry, with House Bill I, House Bill 920 will automatically increase every property taxpayer's taxes in Medina and other taxing districts that are not on the 20th floor. So it will be devastation to property taxpayers because they'll be paying more property tax. Yes, you'll be paying less in income if your income is over, was it $150,000, you'll be paying less income. If your income's over $150,000, or sorry, under $150,000, I believe your income tax will actually raise because it'll be going from the, I believe you were at, was it 2% or less than 2%, you'll be going up to 2.75%. And then anybody whose income is below $26,500, it'll be zero itself, so. So House Bill nine, or House Bill I is very detrimental to schools because it, as I stated before, it'll reduce the amount of property tax that we'll get, and property taxpayers will have to pay more. It'll benefit the state because they could claim that they reduced your income taxes, and for everyone else, the communities and that, it's not going to be beneficial at all. Questions?
And it's, my understanding, it's basically a tax savings for the wealthy.
Yes, because their, their tax, income tax is going to drop down to 2.75%. And I think they're advertising it as a flat tax for anybody from $26,000 to over $150,000.
But ultimately, people are going to need to pay more because of the law. But ultimately, people are going to need to pay more because of the loss of money going to cities, municipalities, and school districts, because if they want to continue current levels of services, they're going to have to pay more in some way to fund those.
Correct. Yeah, the, and the cities, municipalities, and services, we have what are known as inside mills. Those are non-reducible mills. So if you lower the valuation, the inside millage will be reduced.
And, and we're not just bringing this up today because we're strongly opposed to House Bill One, as are all of our educational organizations that we're members of, but also we want the board to be aware of the potential impacts on upcoming bonds and levies.
How much will we lose? If House Bill One goes through, the school district itself is anticipated to lose roughly $750,000 per year. If House Bill One goes through, property taxpayers will be paying roughly 3.6 mills a year or more, if that makes sense.
So how it impacts us is if House Bill One goes through, it's going to drastically change the amount of millage we would need to put on the ballot in order to fund a facilities project or in order to get the kind of operating dollars that we need. So that's something that we need to be cognizant of moving forward and potentially have to make adjustments to our plans or to what these numbers are, are going to be. They're supposed to have a final vote on this early in the summer, but we can't trust that our state representatives will actually meet the timelines that they're supposed to, because historically they have not on big issues like this. We are proceeding as though House Bill One will not pass. There is a lot of opposition to it for obvious reasons. But again, it's important that the board's aware of this, just in case it unfortunately were to pass and we have to take an about-face and make major adjustments to what we're doing. This is also one of the reasons why we are going to want to recommend to the board the ballot issues earlier than we need to. That's why we're looking at June to do that, even though they, technically the board doesn't need to do that until July, because that'll allow us flexibility to go back and make changes and not be locked in. So that's what we have for you this evening in terms of the facility information. We're open for further discussion, also open to have individual discussion if board members would like to, either individually or in smaller group moving forward. But like I said, our intent is to put something more formally together based off of our discussion for presentation upcoming meeting. I want to thank Kids First for being here and sticking out the whole meeting and encourage you to eat. The food is not a normal thing.
Mr. Sable, just to clarify, when you said the next meeting, did you mean the April meeting coming up or the May meeting?
Either the April or May. I think we need to pull our team back together and have debrief. The April meeting is just in a week and a half or so, so.
And I also wanted to thank the representatives, representatives from Kids First for coming. We really appreciate all the work that you have done so far, and I know you're going to have a lot more work to do, so thank you for all of your time.
We do have a scheduled, right, right. No, we do have a scheduled volunteer meeting next, this coming Wednesday at the Junior and Senior Commons at 6:00 PM. And it's designed to be an informational for anyone who might be interested in being involved with Kids First Medina, learning more about us. So if any of you should know anybody, we do have that meeting, as well as they can also reach out personally so we can talk further.
And I do encourage, if our board members could, when you're talking to community members, help make people aware of Kids First, because conversations we've had with Kids First in the past, they've been solely focused around levy campaigns. But I think there's some interest and passion in really taking that further and looking at legislation issues such as House Bill One that we've talked about, so that we have a true parent community advocacy group, organized advocacy group, to be a voice for the district at the state level, which is important nowadays.
Yes, agreed.
Can you put a plug out for how can people find out more about Kids First, or where can they find you on social media?
Yep, so we have a website. We are on social media, so if you're on Facebook, we do have a Kids First Medina. I don't think there are any other Kids First Medina's that exist out there. Our website also has, I believe, Vicki, right, a link to sign up if you're interested in volunteering, as well as our contact information emails that we regularly monitor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We don't have food at our meetings, though, so. We're working on it. We've got to do some more money raising.
Okay, we do have an executive session scheduled if one of the board members would like to make a motion.
I'll, I'll second.
And that is to go to executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee or official, discussion with the board's legal counsel of disputes involving the board that are subject to pending or imminent court action in preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. I believe Ms. Pritchard made the motion. No. Mr. West made the motion, Ms. Pritchard second. Thank you. Mr. Chambers.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we will not be taking any action when we return out of executive session. Thank you for everyone making the time this evening to come, share information with us. I hate, and not that you have to rush out, take whatever you want with you. Thank you.